Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a quorum.
Very well. Is there a motion to approve the Journal of the Meeting of November 26, 2019? So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The November 26, 2019 Journal is approved. Is there a motion to approve the Journal of the Meeting of December 3, 2019? So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The December 3, 2019 Journal is approved. At this point, I'm going to move to suspend the rules in order for the presentation of a resolution to the family of Erling Judd. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rules are suspended. Madam Clerk, will you please read the resolution?
Resolution Number Two, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus and Harder. Resolution: Whereas the late Erling Judd will be remembered for her devotion to public service, having served in elected office in state and local government and in leadership positions in civic and political organizations over the course of more than thirty years; and whereas a mentor and friend to so many, Mrs. Judd's memory will live on as an inspiration to future generations of community leaders. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows: Section One, the County Council is grateful for the time Mrs. Judd could give to all of us, and expresses its most sincere sense of loss to all of her friends and loved ones.
Thank you. A move for adoption of Resolution Number Two. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Resolution Number Two is adopted. At this time, we're going to present a formal copy of the resolution to the Judd family. But before we do, I just want to make a quick statement about Erling Judd, who was my friend. As the resolution states, she truly was a patriot and devoted to public service. She served in the Missouri House, was an outstanding legislator there, and also performed many other public service functions in many boards and committees. She was a delegate to the Republican National Conventions in 1988 and 92. James Freeman Clark once said, "A politician thinks of the next election; a statesman thinks of the next generation." Little could he have known how perfectly he described the statesman that was Erling But more than all of this, Erling Judd was a woman of great faith, who never failed to let the light of that faith shine on and bless everyone she met. With that, I'd like to come down to present Mr. John Judd, her husband, with this resolution. So with that being the case, we have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to other communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Third District.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the change of address be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, All Districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five, Second Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six, Seventh and Second Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number seven?
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfers on items number seven through eleven be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twelve, Sixth Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number fifteen, and that will be the order.
Item number sixteen, All Districts.
Receive and file, and hold on the order of business, please, and that will be the order.
Item number seventeen?
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eighteen?
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number nineteen?
Receive and file, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number one, Sixth Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number four?
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Report to the County Executive.
Thank you, Ernie, and good evening, everyone. Nearly eight months ago, when the previous administration was mired in legal trouble, Lieutenant Colonel Troy Doyle was appointed as Acting Director at the Justice Center. Operational issues were in question, and we had unfortunately three deaths in three short months, and it was abundantly clear an overhaul was needed. Lieutenant Colonel Doyle oversaw the accreditation of the jail. Under his supervision, more than thirty corrections officers were disciplined. Communications improved between nurses and corrections officers, and policies and procedures were posted online. During his tenure, I activated the Justice Services Advisory Committee, and they've been working closely with Lieutenant Colonel Doyle to improve operations at Justice Services. And under Lieutenant Colonel Doyle's tenure, fees, excessive fees, were eliminated for inmates that were released from custody, and the procedures and policies surrounding pregnant inmates were reviewed. Shackling was prohibited, and prenatal and postnatal care was improved. We also issued an executive order which made no-cost feminine hygiene products available for everyone during their entire stay in Justice Services. And then last month, we announced a new partnership with the County Library to provide more reading materials in Justice Services, and also a library card for anyone who wanted it when they were released from custody. Lieutenant Colonel Doyle has shown real leadership during his time in overseeing the Justice Services, and as our new Acting Director, Ron Bedasco, takes over, I want to give Lieutenant Colonel Doyle a chance to come forward and tell us about his time as Acting Director of Justice Services. Troy, can you come up?
Hey, good evening. Mr. Chairman, County Executive, members of the council, good evening. First and foremost, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your unwavering support over the past several months as I served as the interim Director of the Department of Justice Services. Your confidence in me allowed me the freedom to introduce a number of initiatives to Justice Services that I believe will be both beneficial to the staff, the inmates, and the community as a whole. County Executive, you already mentioned most of them, but let's start off by talking about the cameras. In today's world, I believe we all know and understand the value of having cameras. Cameras provide better transparency and increase the safety for the staff and inmates alike, along with providing a layer of oversight and holding both staff and inmates accountable for their actions. We're in the process of, I'm sorry, we installed cameras in the infirmary. We're in the process of installing cameras in the housing units. The In-Custody Death Team, this was an idea that I brought back from Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I thought it'd be beneficial for us here in St. Louis. There's a number of layers to this new unit, but more importantly, this unit will provide an opportunity to give information to family members of an unfortunate death within the first forty-eight hours. Again, as I mentioned, there's other layers to it, but it also gave us an opportunity to address structural failures and give us an opportunity to change those as we see. Training. Obviously, the more we train, the better we perform. I was able to successfully enter a contract with the St. Louis County Municipal Police Academy to provide training to Justice Services staff, specifically the leadership staff. The staff is now able to receive training in areas such as implicit bias, de-escalation, and the use of force. The County Executive just mentioned the elimination of predatory fees. With the assistance of the County Executive and you, the council, we were able to eliminate the seventy-dollar booking fee, the twenty-dollar bonding fee, the two-dollar nursing fee, the five-dollar dentistry fee. You guys know where I'm going. They were all predatory fees, and we were successful, we were able to do that together. Most of the individuals who were incarcerated or experiencing financial hardships and eliminating these fees will hopefully put them in a better situation as they re-enter our community. Transparency. In the wake of four deaths in a short span of time, I recognize and trust should be definitely at the forefront of anything that we do as we move forward. I started by meeting with some of the family members of those who happened to perish at our jail, which resulted in me putting most of our policies and procedures online. Better collaboration with the medical staff. Dr. Duchette and I talk on a weekly basis. Sometime, we text each other almost daily. Staff meetings now takes place once a week to make sure that we're all focus-driven and triaging the week's activities. The Directors Committee, an idea I actually stole from the Police Department, but established the committee to line-level employees to meet with the director on a monthly basis to address any concerns that they may have. Essentially gives them a voice to the directors' office, which they didn't have in the past. And finally, I established an area-wide Directors Leaders Committee. This is a committee of directors of jails throughout the St. Louis metropolitan area, including St. Clair, Illinois. We meet on a quarterly basis to share and exchange information in an effort to stay abreast of the latest trends. Again, those are just a few highlights. Obviously, there are many others that you mentioned. But in closing, again, I would like to offer my heartfelt condolences to the families who lost loved ones here at the jail. I can imagine how they must feel. Hopefully, some of the changes during my tenure at the jail will provide some level of comfort, knowing that we're moving in the right direction. Hopefully, we can prevent these tragedies from happening in the future. I would also like to thank Lieutenant Jack Webb, who served as my Assistant Director during this tenure. Without Lieutenant Webb's assistance, the number of initiatives that we were able to accomplish wouldn't have come to fruition. I would like to thank the assistance of the new Board of Directors headed up by Chairman Reverend DeVal, as they came in highly motivated and eager to move things in the right direction. I would also like to thank Mike Chapman, who was my immediate supervisor, along with Chief Belmer, who also assisted me and supported me during this endeavor. County Executive Sam Page, sir, I thank you for your support in any and all the issues that I brought to your attention. You were very supportive and allowed me the autonomy to run the jail in a manner that will shine a brighter light on St. Louis County. While you did give me the autonomy, you also held me accountable for the services provided by the Department of Justice level. That level of accountability was needed at the time, but I thank you for it. And lastly, I want to thank the many hard workers at Justice Services who come to work each and every day and perform a job that most people are not willing to do. The staff were subjected to insults, assaults, and other inhumane things almost on a daily basis. I discovered there are a number of great, hard-working individuals that are assigned to the Department of Justice Services. And if you can allow me just to add one more thing here, and it's really for public consumption, when we decided to look at the Department of Justice Services, it was a bipartisan effort. Everybody on the council here, regardless of political association or affiliation, were all on board in making sure that the Justice Services was ran in the right direction. So again, I thank you all for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Colonel, very good. On behalf of the council and myself personally, I want to thank you for the incredible leadership you showed under incredibly difficult circumstances. The quantum leap forward that you've achieved in barely half a year speaks to your quality of leadership and what you did over there. So I can't thank you enough for taking that task on.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well done. Thanks.
Thank you, Sam. A report of special committee, Ethics Committee, will hold, continue to hold on the order of business, and that will be the order, which brings us to public forum. Tonight, we have twenty-six speakers, so again, quite a few. Just a few brief reminders. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. I will give you a thirty-second warning when you approach two and a half minutes, and I'd like you to try to honor that period because we have a lot of people to get through. I'm not going to reiterate all of the ground rules we've talked about the last few weeks, but I will say that I am incredibly pleased with the decorum and the effort made by the public to honor the speakers, not to talk over them or around them, and to let them be heard. And I would encourage you to do the same thing tonight. When the speaker is speaking, please do not offer comments from the gallery. Please don't try to speak over them or around them or make editorial comments. If you do that, you'll be warned that you're out of order, and if it continues, we'll have to deal with it. And I don't want to have to go there, hopefully. But other than that, again, I want to commend our citizens for their decorum and respect for the speakers as we've had the last several weeks. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
First Speaker, Hera Gerber.
Evening, Ms. Gerber.
Good evening, Ms. Gerber. Mr. Chairman, County Executive members of the board and county members of the board, my name is Hera Gerber. I live at 13482 Mason Village Court, Town and Country, Missouri, 63131. I'd like to use this opportunity to let you know that I strongly oppose Bill Number 324. I am especially distressed to see that the only method of deer control mentioned in this bill is hunting with bows and arrows. For urban deer, this is a cruel method of killing, where about half the deer do not fall where they are shot, but take off running and die a slow death hours or days later. If they encounter a road, these injured deer dart across, ignoring traffic danger. In my town, Town and Country, the method of archery hunting has been considered many times over the years, and each time it is rejected because it is inhumane, dangerous, and ineffective. If you hunt deer in the park, then after the first night, the deer will become extra careful and move out of the park into nearby neighborhoods where it is safe. Some residents may find the appearance of many extra deer to be a nuisance. Bill Number 324 promises to solve a difficult problem at no cost to the county. Too good to be true? Most definitely. The bill allows the County Council to tell their constituents they are doing something, but when the real cost comes after their office terms are finished, the deer problem stays unsolved. Please do not ask the park's director to control deer with the bows and arrow methods. Do ask him to work with the Department of Conservation and the surrounding towns to develop a comprehensive and effective plan, a plan that includes fertility control. Thank you, and I'd like to encourage everyone to be kind to all beings, not just during holiday season, but during every season. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber.
Next Speaker, Rick Gaines.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Page, and County Council, my name is Rick Gaines. I am the Chief General Officer for St. Louis County Family Court. I'm here to talk about the consideration for the substitute bill, which includes a salary increase for judicial administration and family court employees. First of all, I'd like to thank the County Council for your leadership, for the great citizens of St. Louis County. St. Louis County is seen as a leader in county government in our great state, in particular because we are the largest jurisdiction in the great state of Missouri. Secondly, I think we have great citizens that support our county government in St. Louis County. And thirdly, I'd like to say that I believe we have the best staff in county government in the state of Missouri, and a lot of our staff are here today. In thinking about how this impacts our citizens in St. Louis County, we must maintain the focus and attention on obtaining and maintaining great staff or the most valuable resources that we can give our citizens of St. Louis County, and that is our staff. We ask you, as leaders, to support this amendment to the bill in perspective to the court has been working cooperatively with the council in excess of two years to receive additional pay increments. The court has cut approximately 1.3 million from our operating budget, which impacts our citizens. The ten percent additional to pay for county-funded employees will decrease staff turnover, which now exceeds over twenty percent just in the family court alone. And I can give you an example of that. We have had several staff leave our organization in the past, and I've been here two and a half years, that we have employed these folks, and subsequently, these folks have left us in a very short time because they have received other offers that are way greater than what St. Louis County can offer. So other organizations are assuming staff that we invest in, that we train, that impacts our citizens of St. Louis County. In recruiting new employees, just this week, we had an African-American young lady decline an offer that we gave her because our offer did not reach anything comparable to what other organizations are offering to these young people. And so I would just ask that you support this bill that the County Council hopefully will adopt as part of the St. Louis County budget going into 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Appreciate it.
Next Speaker, Millicent Williams.
Good evening, Millicent Williams. 11704, Rutsednella, St. Louis County. I'd like to say good evening to the councilmen and the councilwomen. And welcome back, Councilwoman Kelly Dunaway. I had called your office, I know you was on vacation. Hope you had a great time. I did call to ask this question. I know there's been two other policemen, I mean, there's two other members that have been assigned to the police commission board, and the request of the termination of Nicholas Newberry, Officer Nicholas Newberry, during the sexual assault that I received. Wanted to know, would that be resubmitted? I'm not exactly sure of the process. I haven't gotten any response. I know I've come up here several times and haven't gotten a response from that. Would that be revisited to the board, or has it been offered, or assist? I don't know if that's an answer, something that can be answered as a question now. Councilman Page?
Tracus, but I don't have an answer for you, ma'am. I don't, I think you'd have, you'd better be better served attending the next meeting of the Police Commission.
Oh, okay. Well, thanks. I definitely need to know the process because I haven't received any response. I don't know the responses that you do receive, or you receive at all since this has been submitted. So I definitely wanted to come and ask. Now that I know that, I will do that. I sure appreciate it. Thanks for all of your happy holidays.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next Speaker, Cornell Jones.
Good evening, Council. Last time I addressed this board was November 12th, one day after Veterans Day, being a veteran. One thing that was appalling and quite eye-opening that particular evening was our county executive was absent on the same day that the death of that young lady who was ran over by one of our shining county policemen. I found that very revealing. We see right now in the contents of our government, many want to sit in the seat, but when it gets hot, they can't sit. And that's what we saw at that time. So I propose that, since Mr. Page took an purposely opportunity to vacate that seat on that particular night, then we must work diligently to make him permanently out of that seat. Because you see, our children mean that much to us, that we have road cops run through reckless abandon throughout our neighborhood, and then run over them, and then when they die, and also that was not shared with the public at large, that particular evening, I came early. There were over twenty-five county cops hidden behind this agenda. We said we can't find African-American policemen who in the war. I counted out of the twenty-five, at least ten were there. They was perfectly put back there in case we felt anger enough to say, "You ran over, you killed." No apology whatsoever. So these things are appalling. So as we go forward, and I mentioned on that night, we seriously do not make them pay politically for when they do something to us or our children. So these are things that we be seeing in this political torment in next year. Be conscious of what they say, but more importantly, what they have done, and then hold them accountable at the polls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Next Speaker, Janet Noble.
Good evening, Ms. Noble.
Good evening. 333 North Gore, Webster Groves. I'm here to talk about the issue of the bow and arrow hunting in the county parks. I don't know where this idea got started. I don't feel like the council has done enough research, due diligence on making this a safe issue if it is passed. Just last week, December 6th, on the news, all the TV stations in the St. Louis County area, a couple were walking home near the Katy Trail, and a hunter was up in a deer stand and had shot one deer, and they were shooting with a rifle towards the street at another deer. The couple were walking with their children, and the children witnessed this. The couple called the police. Before anybody was able to respond to the situation, the hunter was gone. So if we allow deer hunting in the county parks, and it is near a residential area, bow hunting is difficult enough, and a lot of times, the deer is so big, you cannot see if there's a pet or a child behind the deer. And if the deer moves and the arrow goes and kills a dog or a child, who's responsible for that? Can the family sue the city council, or the county, or the deer hunter? Hopefully, they'll be able to find the deer hunter, but what if they don't? Who's responsible for that? Have any of these questions been addressed by whoever brought this issue up? Have any of these questions been addressed by whoever brought this issue up? This is a real problem. Deer hunting is dangerous. All these issues need to be thought of ahead of time. So that's one of my concerns about this. And then I spoke out against this issue 10 years ago and 20 years ago in Town and Country. We're all, some of us are here tonight to speak on this topic. So if we really had some solutions that would resolve this, we wouldn't be here speaking about this years later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and thank you for not allowing any more money to go to the trolley in the Delmar Loop area.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
We need money to go to more police officers and to put up fences so that the deer do not get out on the highway. Out by Bush's Wildlife, if we're going from Westville to the Daniel Boone Bridge, there's a fence high enough where the deer cannot go through. And if anybody would really research this area, deer usually track in groups, and there are deer pathways. So we know where the deer are going to cross. So this is an issue that the council, somebody in the council, needs to do more research on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Noble.
Next speaker, Michael Duing.
Good evening, Mr. Duing.
Good evening. Michael Duing. I'm an animal advocate, and I'm here to speak to you again. Mr. Trekis publicly stated that he doesn't like backroom deals and that he feels they are still going on concerning the privatization of the airport. Called the advisory board for the airport privatization window dressing. This is similar to the advisory board that was created for animal care and control. It was simply window dressing. It had no real authority, but yet it was still disbanded with no reason given and no notification given to the members on it. This seems like it was also a backroom deal done to cover up the council's shady dealings. The council and Mr. Trekis have repeatedly stated they wish for transparency, yet their actions indicate otherwise. The same way Trekis wants the county to have more say in what the citizens, it wants the county to have more say, we want the citizens to have the respect they deserve from a council that should answer to the citizens, not the other way around. If you look at the new director that was hired, it seems very much like a backroom deal. The qualifications for the position are publicly posted, and the qualifications for the applicant are also publicly available. The qualifications for the applicant did not meet the qualifications for the position, and yet they were hired and employed for a week before the county even announced the position was filled. It has been stated that there would be a national search, and yet there only seems to have been one applicant interviewed. And another lie that is written on the action plan, posted on the county website regarding the audit, on your audit action plan, it states, "For volunteers. Volunteer program. The volunteer program will be transitioned into a fully developed program through a collaborative approach with the volunteers." That was right before you fired them all. Is that transparent action by this council? I don't see it as that. Since all my comments have to be directed to the presiding officer, I'd like to direct these to Trekis, and if you would please pass these comments along to Rita Days. Rita asked in the 1119 meeting if there was a vehicle to get results on the issues, including the Millicent Williams incident. I would like to state that she was given misinformation by the chairman and the county councilor according to the Sunshine Law. The incident report should be open, and I would like to state the precedent of Geyer versus City of Kirkwood that states, "A complaint alleging criminal misconduct by a police officer is an incident report, and a report concerning an investigation into the complaint is an investigative report." Under Statute 610.100, those records can be closed only on grounds specified, and for closing law enforcement records, they cannot be closed on the grounds that they are personnel records related to disciplining or firing an employee. Records prepared and retained for the public governmental bodies are subject to the Sunshine Law. Law enforcement records are subject to the same presumption of openness as other public records and receive special treatment under the Sunshine Law.
Thank you, Mr. Duing. Your time is up.
Next speaker, Tom Sullivan.
Good evening, Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I have a few things to mention. I'm still wondering what's going on with the federal audit of the Loop Trolley. Haven't heard a thing since the council passed a resolution urging the audit in October. County taxpayers have $3 million in the trolley and nothing to show for it. County Executive Page, who voted to give the money to the trolley, continually says he is for transparency and accountability. So who is accountable for the $3 million wasted on the trolley? And now Metro CEO Talby Roach thinks Bystate should take over the Loop Trolley. All of a sudden, he thinks he has the money to operate the trolley for four or five years before asking his partners, including St. Louis County, for additional funding. None of it makes any sense. Taxpayers are overwhelmingly opposed to more funding for the trolley, but they will go ahead anyway. Also, whatever happened to the effort to revitalize Jamestown Mall? There was a town hall meeting in North County on July 15th with the county executive in attendance, and that's what everyone was interested in. But no word on any progress ever being made. At the meeting, there were complaints the county wasn't even keeping the weeds cut at the old mall. Another issue brought up at the meeting was the lack of grocery stores after Shop 'n Save closed. Rodney Crim said the economic partnership was working on it. What became of that? Affordable Housing Trust Fund bill is up again for perfection. I think the housing issue as a whole needs to be looked at from a broader perspective. It's quite a complicated issue. There was a lot of interesting discussion about housing a few years back when the residential housing proposal was considered by the council. I wonder if Councilwoman Clancy viewed those meetings. I received a response today from County Councilor Beth Orwick to a Sunshine request made on November 20th. This is another violation of the Sunshine Law. Another complaint will be made to the Attorney General's Office. Ms. Orwick will be going to the disciplinary council for lawyers in Missouri. She has numerous violations of the rules of professional conduct. I should think her law license should be suspended for six months. Thank you, Mr. Trekis.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Next speaker, Cassandra Lovett.
Good evening, Ms. Lovett.
I'd like to start with some food for thought. The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing. This can apply for most of the issues that are presented to your council weekly. There are good people and bad people. Good people who stand by and do nothing about bad people are just as much at fault for those actions. Animals are being isolated and eventually put to death based on uneducated opinions of those being allowed to assess animal behavior. I attended a class offered by the Academy of Pet Careers this weekend called Safe Handling Skills for Animal Care Workers. As a result of the incident that resulted in the suspension of volunteer Jenny Agnew, this class has been offered to shelter and rescue workers for free. I suggest the course be made a requirement for all shelter employees and volunteers, and definitely to those whose input is used in determining the fates of animals. You've pushed out free skill volunteered animal care for taxpayer-funded neglect to preserve overinflated EOs and underqualified management, and discourage those volunteers from re-entering the volunteer pool with an unnecessary nondisclosure agreement and restrictions that prevent them from doing the very things that audits suggest they be utilized to accomplish, due to management sphere of whistleblowers and dislike of breaks in the chain of command. There would be no fear of whistleblowers if the facility weren't doing humane practices. There would be no need for whistleblowers or breaking of chain of command if concerns were acknowledged and addressed with solutions instead of bucks being passed and blame being shifted to pit employees and volunteers against one another to distract from management shortcomings. Nearly a decade of dysfunction on various levels has caused distrust of management by the volunteers whose agenda has always been and will always be the welfare of the animals. What is your agenda? We would all like to be informed, but more so, we would like to see appropriate actions instead of the retaliatory and self-preserving ones currently being taken. We have our own ideas of your agendas, but we'll wait for the transparency that you speak of and see which side of your faces that it comes from.
Thank you, Ms. Lovett.
Next speaker, Lynn Labob.
Good evening, Ms. Labob. Good evening, council members. My name is Lynn Labob in 9701 Irene Place. I'm here tonight to voice my concern as District 6, as a resident of District 6, unincorporated resident. On tonight's agenda, there appears to be requests that only have an effect on unincorporated St. Louis County. Those would be vulnerable road user dealing with bicyclists if hit, and free pool passes for certain qualifying children at W.C. Kennedy Recreational Center and the St. Vincent Community Center. Also, regarding Ms. Clancy's misguided vagrancy bill, we have lots of trash from vagrants and panhandlers at exit ramps. As taxpayers, we want clean and safe communities free from laundering, prostitution, and illegal activities. Instead, Ms. Clancy's policy initiatives continue to want to destroy our communities with the same policies of San Francisco. In addition, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will directly have an impact on unincorporated. I want to ask the council members, making these requests for unincorporated, to first go to your own municipalities and advocate for policies that you desire. Unincorporated St. Louis County is not your toy box. I have a very capable councilman, Bernie Trekis. He is active in the community and can advocate for issues most important to his constituents. Again, please advocate your own wish list in your communities and leave ours alone.
Thank you, Ms. Labob.
Next speaker, Lynn Gober.
Good evening, Ms. Gober. Good clerk, writing.
Hi, my name is Lynn Gober. I made a petition up for, to rid St. Louis County of Spring Schmidt and Carol Baskin. This petition has been going for about one month, and we have 8,000 signatures. I think that speaks volumes. And in this petition, it also, Mr. Page, it also speaks to what you, they know that you are in charge of this. So if you don't take action here, 87% of these signatures are from county taxpayers. This is going to hurt your campaign if you want to get back in as county executive. I mean, it's, it only stands to read, it's 8,000 votes that you're not going to have. You have time to turn this around. It's up to you. Those 400 volunteers want to come back. We don't know what's going on out there at county. I mean, are these animals being sold to pound seizures? Is that where they're going, and we don't know? Because it doesn't make any sense. If you look at what is happening, Carol Baskin's background in animal testing, the animals disappearing with no, we don't know where they go. There's no record of where these animals are going. Strays are coming in. There's, they disappear. They just disappear. The firing of 400 volunteers because they use their voice for the animals. There's so many things that lead to this. The ORE, the ORE that they made owners sign when they surrendered an animal. I mean, where are these animals going and what is going on? Animals are in mainstream media today more than ever. People are watching what's happening to the animals. Anybody who is against them, the county taxpayers are against. So if you guys don't do something and change this, you're not going to get back in office. I guarantee you. Jake Zimmerman wants to help. Now, I don't know whether it's true or not, and I don't know whether he's going to do it or not, but I mean, he wants to do something for these animals. And that is who we're pushing to get back in here. Because you guys aren't doing anything for them.
30 seconds, Ms. Gober.
I mean, nobody's doing anything. We don't know what to do anymore. We're not going to walk away. I mean, some of these volunteers may go down to the city to care where they appreciate their volunteers, but I'm not leaving. I'm not going anywhere till I know where these animals are going and what's happening. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Gober.
Next speaker, Kathy Harris.
Good evening, Ms. Harris.
Good evening. Let me take a quick breath here.
Take your time.
Good, good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Executive Page, and council members. And over there, Mr. Fitch. My name is Kathy Harris. I live at 326 McCullough Avenue in Kirkwood, Missouri. And I am a deputy juvenile officer with the Family Court in St. Louis County, and I am in my 43rd year there. I must love it, which I do. I appreciate all of my coworkers coming out tonight. And we stand, we have stood before you before, and again, here to ask for your support for the Family Court's certified budget that was submitted for personnel and bailiffs pay increments. I read through some of the, our county executive's budget message. I read through some of it, and as well as the budget. And one of the statements that was in there says that in part, 56% of the employees have gone without pay increases in six of the last 10 years, and receiving only small cost of living raises in the last four. Well, I've been here 43. I'm in that group, as well as many of my coworkers are. Something that you had also stated at county executive was that we're falling behind in the market for compensation, which causes many new employees to leave shortly after we invest the time and resources to train them. Another issue that we have also brought before the council on many occasions. I would like to say that we serve the public, providing programs, services to protect children from abuse and neglect, expand community programs, enlist community partners to work with our youth because we want them to grow up healthy and to become productive citizens. We are fortunate that we have had grants to put specialized programs in place. And with many of those initiatives that we have, our staff give of their personal time with no compensation to see that the needs of our families are met. I ask also that the council strongly review pages 218 through 223 of the recommended budget, paying close attention to what we have, we as the Family Court have done to reduce expenditures in order to fund the raises for our employees.
12 seconds.
12 seconds? I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your thanks.
For reconsidering, I'm not quite done, for reconsidering the court's ordered certified budget for 2020 and for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your coming.
Next speaker, Barb Hughes.
Good evening, Ms. Hughes.
Hi, how are you? Good evening. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Same to you.
County Executive Page, Chairman Trekis, members of the County Council, good evening. My name is Barbara Ann Hughes. I live at 101 Hawthorne Estates, Town and Country, 63131. I am against allowing bow hunting in our county parks, period. Bow hunting simply will not reduce the deer population for the long run. It will reduce it for the short term, but not It will reduce it for the short term, but not the long term. Other communities have discovered that remaining does can produce twins and triplets, thus creating a cycle of killing year after year after year. It has been said, I've overheard, that there are, some statements said that there are those of us who maybe just don't understand the financial aspects of all of this. Data from the city of Town and Country indicates that since 2008, it's a good thing you're sitting down, 1,123,701 dollars were budgeted for deer management, when in actual terms it was 951 dollars, 951,306 dollars was actually spent. Overwhelming. So bow hunting in our county parks may or may not have a financial consideration, but what about the perception of our community and how we address wildlife issues, our management in an urban area? When the Town and Country residents were surveyed, bow hunting was not an option that they wanted to pursue. Public safety and inhumane aspects of bow hunting were cited by residents. So I ask, before you vote, please secure the voice of county residents and your constituents. Please, first, do that first. Please establish a comment, period, for public to make comments. And in conclusion, I view our county parks as a tranquil place where we can feel safe, and I believe the phrase is "where we can have fun naturally," and I'd like to see it stay that way. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
Next speaker, William Ash.
Good evening, Mr. Ash.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. My name is Bill Ash. I live in University City in District Five. I too wanted to speak out on the issue of managed deer hunts in county parks. I'd like to amplify my colleague who just spoke. There's some other considerations. You know, many deer are wounded by bow and arrow. You, you don't just shoot an arrow and instantly kill an animal. It will take repeated arrows to kill this poor animal, and it would require that the hunter hunt down and follow and track the deer wherever it goes in order to finish it off. We wouldn't kill human beings this way. We would call this cruel and unusual punishment. So I think there's that aspect which really should be considered as a moral aspect. We're going to have a training program for the bow hunters. They need to be good, exceptional shots, and they need to know that they need to follow up and, and finish off the poor animal after, after we do that. I, I think that's, it just seems very, very wrong and unrealistic to me. Are we going to shoot just the does? What about the fawns? Are we going to shoot the fawns as well? And if we shoot just the does, we're going to have a lot of fawns in their nests and in their burrows, which will have no mothers. So we have the Bambi problem going on. We're going to be finding, finding baby deer in the park and God knows where else, and you're going to have people going to the media showing that the baby, the baby deer is that they, they found in their yard, which have no mother. And then if you're chasing a deer, what if it runs out of the park? And, and there's the safety issue, there's going to be automobiles. Are we going to have the residents be on the lookout for deer coming across their lawns when we're out shooting them in a, in a managed shoot? I just don't think it's very practical at all. It's not, it's just not a realistic way to, to handle the problem, I don't think. So you're, you're going to have possible deer collisions, you're going to have, someone may be hurt, property may be damaged. I mean, if a single human is hurt or even injured, where's the liability? I think the county is liable for, for, for the shooters that they allow to go out on the, on the grounds. It would seem very reasonable that someone would come back and sue the county. So I, I don't think it's a very wise decision. Thank you. So I'd ask you to propose, table this proposal, set us some alternatives. There's a new PZP vaccine, which, sterilization vaccine, which can be used with a dart gun. At least examine this, examine a comprehensive overall plan before passing a short-sighted plan such as on the table tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ash.
Next speaker, Laura Kaplan.
Good evening, Ms. Kaplan.
Good evening. Good evening, council members and Dr. Page. My name is Dr. Laura Kaplan. I live in Olivet, and I have an office in Clayton. As always, I thank all of you for your devoted service and your willingness to hear your constituents. I'm a past and current volunteer at St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. It has been my experience since I re-interviewed and was reinstated that the shelter has been busy promoting itself and its work through social media. These posts might give council members and the general public the impression that the shelter is functioning well and improving on a regular basis. Please know that these posts present an inaccurate and incomplete picture. Of the approximately 400 volunteers who previously worked at the shelter, only about 25 are currently enrolled. Many outstanding previous volunteers have yet to even be re-interviewed. This is entirely unacceptable and inconsistent with the management's stated goals and the well-functioning of the shelter. A tiny team of volunteers are showing up to work ridiculous hours on a daily basis just to ensure that the animals are getting even the most basic care. The shelter management attempts to use the overnight animal control officers to walk the dogs. While this, what this actually means is that the dogs are being taken out for three minutes in the dark cold at 2:00 a.m. I'm not exaggerating. The logs bear this out. If a volunteer shows up to give a dog a second walk the next day at 10:00 a.m., that might be it for the animal for the day. And because so few volunteers are available to walk the dogs, those walks are far shorter than they ever were in the past. The hired kennel cleaners are constantly busy because the poor animals simply can't hold it in for 16 hours, although many try, and not all dogs even get two walks. The level of disorganization in dog tracking and promotion is dismal. Dogs ready to leave the shelter are sitting for days before their adoptive families are even called. Dogs have waited a month in the shelter to be spayed, only to have the staff learn that they were already spayed. Dogs that already have approved adopters are being promoted, I'm sorry, are being newly advertised online, and the dogs being promoted don't always have the right picture. Spring Schmidt and Carol Baskin felt the solution to this mess was to hire a director with no experience over the last five years other than selling skincare products. I have yet to physically see her, but I have certainly not felt the benefit of her arrival. I hope that we all care enough to expect big changes, substantial accountability, and a modicum of expertise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Next speaker, Bonnie Boim.
Good evening, Ms. Boim.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bonnie Boim. I'm the vice president of the St. Louis Animal Rights Team. I'm here on behalf of our over 1,000 supporters in St. Louis County, who would like the law that protects wildlife in St. Louis County parks to remain the same. Bow hunting is especially cruel, it's dangerous, and it will ultimately be ineffective in controlling the problems that we're hoping to solve here. Bow hunting is cruel. From Bow Life magazine, a bow has no shocking power when it comes to large game. Death comes by hemorrhage inflicted by a broadhead. A dull broadhead will definitely kill, but greatly minimize the blood trail and increase the chances of an animal suffering a lingering death and often going unrecovered by the hunter. What's being done to make sure that the hunters are using new or sharpened arrows? Are there any provisions to make sure that the hunters have skills with their weapons? Not being competent, this is also according to Bow Life magazine, not being competent with the weapon with which they are hunting is the, by far, the most common mistake made by hunters. Again, is there going to be any kind of proficiency test? Low-skilled hunters love these managed hunts. These are habituated animals that generally don't run, they're used to being around people, and they're often in confined areas. Bow hunting is dangerous. As we know with the case of Margaret Schaffner, when she was sitting at her kitchen table eating a donut, a bow came from 100 yards away through thick woods, through her window, and pierced her face. This, this isn't a hypothetical that could happen, this did happen right here in St. Louis County. How many people live within 100 yards of these county parks? A lot. Dozens of people are killed and maimed in hunting accidents each year, as well as hundreds of companion animals, mostly horses and dogs. And again, to reiterate, who's going to take responsibility if an accident should occur? Who, who is a family going to sue to seek compensation? Hunting is ineffective. Multiple studies show that does and hunted populations go into heat earlier, and there's more than double the rate of twinning and a higher incidence of triplets in hunting populations than non-hunted populations. It will only make the, the problem worse.
Thirty seconds.
As we've seen in Town and Country, they've been doing managed hunts for 10 years. Why has this problem not been solved if it's a successful course of action? We all know the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Please vote no on bill number 324.
Thank you, Ms. Boim.
Next speaker, James Barash.
Evening, Mr. Barash.
Good evening. Thank you, council members. Thank you in advance for your time this evening. I'm here this evening to voice my opposition to bill 324 as well. Again, my name is James Barash. I live at 12261 Fox Point Drive in Maryland Heights, District Two. I live adjacent to Creve Court Lake Park, where we have trails that are non-public trails that connect my subdivision directly to the park, trails that I have used, trails that my kids have used, trails that our subdivision uses as a way to access the park, to enjoy the wildlife that, that also use those same, those same trails. And my concern here is that I have not seen any empirical data that would suggest that a, a managed bow hunt is the solution, a long-term solution to the so-called problem of deers, overpopulation of deer. I can tell you that in my subdivision, and I've talked to many people, that we don't have a problem with overpopulation, and we live right next to the park. I can't speak for every park in St. Louis County, but what I can say is that there are alternatives, and we should, if we are taking such measures to come up with something that is so drastic as to allow the unnecessary killing of animals in our, in our parks, the constituents of these districts should understand exactly what that means. They should know how we got there, because the burden of proof really should lie with the council. It shouldn't lie with the residents of, of the city. Whoever's putting forth the legislation should be in a position where they can, they can say to those, to those constituents, this is exactly what we need, and this is why. And the constituents should be in a position where they can have, they can make an educated decision as to whether or not they agree with the decisions that are being made. So I implore this council to vote no on bill 324 this evening, and I would ask, just as others have come before and asked, that a comprehensive plan be looked at, alternatives other than a, a controlled bow hunt. In 2019 and 2020, I think we can come up with something other than the unnecessary killing of deer in our St. Louis County parks. I thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Next speaker, Kira Braxton.
Evening, Ms. Braxton.
Good evening. I'm a 12-year employee of St. Louis County, and I have never received a merit increase based on my job performance. This current council with the county executive have 17 years of combined experience working for St. Louis County government as elected officials. What is amazing to me is that with 17 years of collective experience, you all are refusing to make the, the tough decisions to bring this county back to the reality that we must live within our means. I have worked with most of you from late 2017 to late 2018, save Mrs. Irby. I have seen what you all can do to get the right thing, the right thing accomplished in the face of a madman. You all are in most, every meeting, at least the most important ones for the budget, so you all are absolutely aware of our financial reality and are well-versed on how it works. So my question is, what are you doing? What has you all running scared, running to deal with everything other than the budget? Sam, what's your game plan? You have watched the lunacy and hypocrisy of Sting, of the Stinger administration. You promised to clean house. You got rid of the rats, but you left quite a few mice around, namely Sean Rhodey, who was mentioned in the federal indictment, newspapers, et cetera, on multiple occasions. So now you have 4,200 employees asking, what's new? What's different? What is he going to do for us? How is he going to make county government better? So far, we are hearing lovely speeches, caring attention to everything and everyone other than the 4,200 employees that make you look good. Are you waiting for the employees to go outside these walls and picket like the employees did overpaying $6 each day for parking back in the 80s? Are you waiting for us to get together and do a class action lawsuit? Because we were all hired and are still being hired with the expectation of earning the top pay of our pay ranges. You all are paid to answer this question. Does the county have a spending problem or revenue problem? Come up with this answer and let that answer not be on the backs of employees anymore. See you next Tuesday.
Thank you, Ms. Braxton.
Next speaker, Elizabeth Handy.
Evening, Ms. Handy.
My name is Elizabeth Handy, and I'm going to be a little intimidated, because I'm going to ask you to please, please pass your 324 bill. I bought my house, and I backed up to Love Park. I loved that. For years, we had no problems, we had deer occasionally. It was wonderful. And what we didn't realize is we had a couple of neighbors who were going to the common ground and, and doing some, some hunting. It kept the numbers down. It was wonderful. We had deer occasionally, they're beautiful, you know that. Then they stopped hunting because they got older, and suddenly they multiply. Picture, every female deer can have two or three deer, fawns, and they can do it twice a year. I can send you a paper, and it shows statistically how many deer it becomes, six, 16, 25. Every year, the numbers multiply. You're hearing from people who live east of 270. The problem is west of 270. Now, the good news is, maybe it'll get easier, because now the deer are moving further east. Pretty soon, it's going to be east of Lindbergh, they don't know what we're talking about, but the people east of 270 will. This is not a problem that's going away. It needs to be solved. We need to first get the numbers down, because they're a danger. I don't live in Town and Country. I've got probably a third of an acre lot. My house probably takes up half of that lot. Ask the conservation people, how many deer is safe in the country with few houses? And they'll tell you, well, we have more deer than that now, and my house takes up half of my lot. So you almost have to take that number that we have and multiply by two to get our real statistics. I sat in my yard pulling weeds three feet from my house, and I looked down, and I was sitting in deer poop. Now, if I'm sitting in deer poop, I'm sitting in deer yearn. We do not have the wasting disease yet. It's in Missouri. One of these days, we will. Wasting disease comes from yearn. I don't have any little children, but if I had a grandchild or a great niece there, they'd have picked up, you know, a deer, it looks like a candy.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Hand.
Please solve our problem. It's dangerous. The other day, two bucks were in my yard, and two females. The bucks moved on down. The neighbors said they started fighting. They fight because it's, it's, it's the time for them to be fighting. If they had let their dog out, or a grandchild, a child in their yard, we'd have had a death. This is what it's like in an overpopulated area. Listen to me, it's coming worse. We need your help. If their parks don't have a problem, pick the parks where there is a problem, and I certainly recommend Love certainly recommend Love Park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, LeAnn Fritch.
I have this right about three minutes, so please don't interrupt me. Good evening, LeAnn Fritch, University City. This actually, someone wrote this and is unable to be here tonight, so I'm reading his words, which are much more eloquent than mine. It's writing in opposition to bill 324, which would allow the killing of deer in county parks. The rationale for this is that deer numbers are increasing and that their population and density are too high. Whether this claim is valid or not, I don't know, and I strongly doubt that the proponents of the bill do either. Knowing that would require data collection and analysis by urban biologists and ecologists whose work could not be compromised by hunting and other interests. This would leave out, for example, the State Department of Conservation, which actively promotes deer hunting. My concern here, however, is that this focus on abstractions like numbers, population, and density is leading us to shift our attention from what really is at stake, the lives of real, living, sentient beings. The deer this bill would allow killing are not populations. They are individuals who have only one life given to them. From their behavior, it's clear that each of them wants to go on living just as much as we do. Yet this bill would treat their lives as if they did not matter, making some pay with their lives for purposes that are ours alone. How can this be fair, particularly when we have not seriously looked at methods of population control that would not harm living deer? And why should deer suffer for our failure to take responsibility for actions that create conflicts with deer in the first place? We have expanded housing developments, industry, and strip malls into woods and farmland, forcing the deer into residential areas and parks. We drive too fast with our noses in our phones, where deer are known to cross roads, but expect them to keep out of our way. We put in gardens with tasty plants, but refuse to install fencing to keep deer out, and then get outraged when they do what they're obviously going to do. When we share environments with animals, we are the ones who can anticipate potential conflicts and can modify our behavior to prevent them from occurring. It is not reasonable to expect animals to do so, or to punish them with death or exile when they don't. Our county parks have, to this point, been sanctuaries for animals of all kinds, including deer. Many people visit parks in hopes of seeing animals, and they are often rewarded with closer encounters than they experience elsewhere, because the animals have less reason to be afraid. Should the county begin to allow hunting in parks, there will be much less of an opportunity for those friendlier encounters. Deer would soon perceive the threat posed by hunters, but would quite prudently see us all now as potential threats.
Thirty seconds.
They would also be quicker to run for their lives, including across roads, putting them in motors at increased risk. Our parks are currently refuges for both people and animals, they should stay that way. I urge the council to vote down bill 24. It would cause suffering and death for the deer for circumstances that are out of their control but are fully within ours. To the extent there are conflicts between people and deer, those could be substantially mitigated by modifying our own behavior. There are things the county could do, from road signage to education, to foster those changes and reduce conflicts. If deer populations are legitimately determined to be too high, there are non-lethal methods that can be explored and implemented. Of one thing we can be certain, every one of the deer in county parks wants to live, their lives are in your hands.
Thank you, Ms. Fritch.
Next speaker, Catriona Dougherty.
Good evening. My name is Catriona Dougherty, and I am a resident of Richmond Heights, District 5, 1086 East London Avenue, and I am here to speak in opposition of bill 324. I urge everyone to vote no on allowing the hunting of innocent deer in county parks. Along with this being cruel, this measure is both dangerous to us as residents and companion animals. Those who live in adjacent communities are under threat of bow hunters. This issue reminds me of what happened to Margaret Schaffner, as Bonnie mentioned earlier, who was struck in the face by a bow that traveled through her window. A man was practicing over 100 yards away, and the bow still traveled through thick woods and into her house. Imagine this happening to another family in St. Louis County, or your children. Even if the parks are closed off during hunting, those walking nearby, or neighborhood kids playing around the woods, as we all know, are put into great danger. Plus, let's be clear, St. Louisans like to see deer. They are beautiful animals, and they add an amazing natural feeling to our parks. Deers belong in our parks. They are wild animals. We have created landscape and parks that suit their needs, so trying to kill them off when we essentially created this environment for them is completely silly. Also, hunting is in fact making the so-called problem worse. Hunted deer populations reproduce faster than non-hunted populations, and deer car collisions also increase during hunting. So if we are really trying to solve this issue, then St. Louis County needs to invest more time in coming up with non-lethal ways to resolve deer-human conflict. Lastly, I'd like to conclude that hunting in itself is extremely brutal. It can take a deer several hours or even days to bleed out after being shot by a bow. The fact that St. Louis County is supporting animal abuse is astonishing. Plus, the hunters that could be allowed in these parks are most likely very inexperienced and will never produce a clean shot. So no matter the circumstance, a deer is always suffering. Put your dog or cat in the deer's position, and then ask yourself if this bill is humane and/or okay. Please consider voting no on this unnecessary, cruel, and markedly unsafe measure, and please keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty.
Next speaker, John Bowman.
Evening, Chairman Trakus, county detective, and distinguished council members. My name is John Bowman. I live in District 1, 4201 Menova Lane. I come before you today to simply discuss fairness. Several years ago, the Department of Justice determined there was a need to come in and give a review to some of the policing practices in the St. Louis County region. The review came back showing there was deficiencies. There were deficiencies in leadership, in the culture, and in the behavior of the police department. So with that being said, we can no longer overlook, there is a need to include language that will represent all police officers, regardless of sex, race, religion, sexual orientation. In order for us to move this department forward, we have sent a letter to the council, county detective, asking implicit bias language is included within the CBA. We sent this letter on November the 19th. So the question is, when was the collective bargaining agreement agreed upon? I just think this is a worthy issue of taking up for the protection not only of our officers, but for the county council, its members, and our taxpayer dollars. As you can see, it was quoted, the jury foreman stated, "We are going to maximize our allowability costs in the county," to send a message out that discrimination would not be tolerated. This is a way to avoid having that be an issue for us in the future. So I'm asking you to really consider adding implicit bias language within the CBA.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Lyndon Bauer.
My name is Lyndon Bowie.
Bowie, I'm sorry.
I serve as president of the Missionary Baptist State Convention of Missouri. It's a convention of roughly 200 area churches. It's statewide, but 200 of those churches are here, and we represent probably about 75,000 voters, in case anybody was wondering. We're here because of the language that you've just been introduced, the implicit bias. When the investigation was done some years ago, it's apparent that there are serious problems within our police department as it relates to discriminatory practices. Many of the officers that come to me and talk to me about being able to navigate some of the discriminatory practices are concerned that they don't get proper representation, even from the union that's negotiating this settlement right now. Their concern is that they won't really have the ability to seek any kind of real answers to what they're doing. And so what we've done is we've sent a letter to you, asking that you would include in the CBA language that would permit even someone, that would permit some actions to be taken place. Primarily, what we're asking is that you would add to the CBA that little piece of language. And I recognize that there are those who say that it was going to slow down the process, that it would push back their ability to ratify and all of that, and I agree, that may happen. If we don't do it this time, we're forced to wait how many more years before that language can actually be included? And that language is necessary to, first of all, respond to some of the issues that were raised by the reports that were handed out when cops finished their investigation and gave that information to us. And so what we're trying to do is to get ahead of that game, and I don't think a few weeks or maybe a couple of months is too much to ask for that kind of protection for the officers that are in question. And when we have the kind of situation within St. Louis County Police, especially the relationship with the union that represents all of the officers, and the concerns that minority officers have with that union, which is not surprising to you all, that's why the ethical society of police is in St. Louis County right now, is because so many of our officers do not feel as if they're being well-represented by the police union in St. Louis County today. And so we're asking that you will not send forward the CBA as it is written, but add to that, and let them tell you whether or not they'll be able to accept that, which incidentally, we have information that they also are not opposed to the language. They also embrace the language, it's just the timing. So we're asking that you all would work with us to make sure that that language is included in the CBA this round, and not force us to wait another three years or so in order to get it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Next speaker, Adolphus Pruitt.
Adolphus Pruitt, President, St. Louis, NWA CP 4811, Dale Moore, and I'm glad I'm not a deer. The issue about the CBA is actually is a simple one, and I guess analogy I'm probably going to use is Northwest Plaza. County approved a contract for Northwest Plaza. Later on, there was some subsequent review of that relationship. That review determined that it was significant issues for the county. Now, the county is in this ongoing wrestling match with the developers to try to fix it after the fact. The county executives announced some time ago that there's going to be a review of the police department from top down. Yet, the county is about to enter into an agreement that could prohibit any outcomes from the review from being implemented. Nobody is saying that we don't want the existing or this proposed CBA to come into effect. What we're saying is, it's not prudent to not have some language in there that will provide for, if a review comes, and a review requires that some action be taken, that you be prohibited from taking it because you entered into agreement prior, prior to having a review done. Some language has to give you all the latitude to act based on the results of the review. You may not have to act at all. The language as proposed simply says, if a review occurs and there's findings, that you have the ability to act on those findings without being in conflict or having to go back to the table with the proposed CBA. And I'm really concerned about it, because there's one other thing that came out of all of this that is always in the back of my head, is that the officer mentioned that he was assigned to a black community as punishment. That's, I mean, just imagine, it is punishment for you to do the duty that we pay you for to be assigned to an African-American community. So what if the review determines that that needs to be addressed, that that assignment process is flawed? How would you do that if you executed a CBA that would prevent you from getting that done? And last, real quick, last time I was here, Millicent, the issue about Millicent, I raised it, and I asked, why don't we provide the range of discipline so they can make a determination whether within that range is adequate for what happened? If you look at the rules of discipline for the police department in 14.4 and 14.3, it mentions this thing about the execution of duties where you use abusive language, or you mistreat or cruelty any public. So it's in there that there's a range of discipline that's associated with that. But why no one would tell her or provide? I know you can't talk about the specific discipline for that officer, because it's a personnel matter, but to provide a range of discipline that that officer was substitute, because it says discipline to provide that information, it just seemed to me to be logical, and it may provide the relief that they're looking for. I appreciate your time, and I wouldn't sign the contract without having the ability to do a review and correct some stuff at the back end. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Phil Duvall.
Evening, Reverend Bush. Good evening, sir. Mr. Trakus, county executive to our elected council members. I stand in support of the words of wisdom that were just shared from the previous three speakers. One must ask this question. Why did ethical society ever become ethical society of police and wanted to open up a chapter in the county for the very reason of the language that is being stopped by the union? If they really mean that they're about anti-discrimination, I hate to use the words from Mr. Sergeant Willhaver, he was told to stop the gayness. We're here to say, stop the discrimination. We're here to say, stop the racism. We're here to say, stop all of these things that have been going on for years, for years. Now, I don't understand the urgency to stop a CBA. If it's about pay, they're going to get the pay anyway, make it retroactive. I've said to you many times, how much does it cost to talk? I think if you would look in the rearview mirror, you would prefer to talk and change the language of a CBA to enforce it than to go to court. You do know you have cases that are coming up, that will be coming up in the next few months, that will embarrass this police department again. Why? Not because it's a gay sergeant, it's because it's a black female officer. And if the language ever protected her, you wouldn't have known the name Nikki Brown. You wouldn't know the previous, there are other names coming. There's a lieutenant that's currently on the department. You're going to hear about his case as well. Why? Getting back to the fundamental question of protected language in a CBA. I wish I believed that the CBA would do it, but because of the collective bargaining agreement they already had, where was that language to protect Willhaver? Where was the language to protect Nikki Brown? Where's the language now that protects ethical society police? They are dismissive. So the laws of convenience lead to collapse. We're asking you to err on the law of sacrifice leads to greatness, and now it's the holiday season. We're going to sit here and parade how those of us who attest to be Christians, to be peace-loving, to talk about how good God is, how great the Christ. And at the end of the day, we look for action. It's not demonstrated in words that you profess to believe, it's demonstrated in the actions. And I'm looking to my very good friends on the end. I understand your party. I understand your conservative values, but I also believe you as good men that understand how to do the right thing and not block progress.
Thank you, Reverend.
Next speaker, Reverend Gerald Gray.
Evening, Reverend Gray. Good evening, Mr. Chairperson and commission people. I wasn't coming tonight. I was scheduled to be somewhere else. I was going to pick up an award, and then I got a call to tell us what was on the agenda, and I just felt that this was much more important. Dr. King said, "The time is always right to do right." Uh, Dr. King said the time is always right to do right. It's always right to do right. We understand that the, uh, county is in the process of, uh, signing a collective bargaining agreement. Uh, I've had an opportunity to look at some national analysis on police union contracts. And I looked at about eighty-four different contracts in major cities across the country. And, and what I found was something, found something of a pattern. Police contracts usually are written to protect police. Uh, and, and what I became mindful of, of the patterns of protections for officers and hurdles for residents who seek to file abuse complaints. The, these collective bargaining agreements and these contracts do protect police, even road police, but they make it very difficult for residents to file complaints against road police or disappropriate behavior. They oftentimes show a pattern of erasing disciplinary records so that we don't know the, the history of police officers who sometimes find themselves doing wrong. They find a pattern of giving officers access to all investigative material. It doesn't do it, doesn't give it to witnesses or victims, but it has a tendency to give it to officers. It disqualifies certain complaints from officers being investigated. It allows substitution of vacation days in lieu of suspension. Police officers through collective bargaining seemingly find a way to protect police, but not often protect residents. We've been here time and time again. Uh, there is a distrust in our community for police. And now, that distrust is being expanded to include, uh, people of different sexual orientation, gender, just, it's being expanded. And so, all we're saying is take your time.
Thirty seconds, Reverend.
Yes, you've been talking for seven months, eight months, however months, but you have an opportunity right now to be patient enough to get it right, to protect police too, not just to protect the broader society. We, we, uh, uh, implore you, uh, urge you to take your time to protect police as you protect community. Public safety is about the public. And we understand that the unions are strong and powerful and they spend money and they get involved. We get it. We understand how they can intimidate. We get it. But you're charged with looking above and moving above the intimidation and the threats and, and that, and the political maneuvering simply to do what's right. You have a chance to do that right now. We, we implore you to do it.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Carl Reinhardt.
Gave me, Mr. Reinhardt. Good news is, I think I was the last one to sign up. My name is Carl Reinhardt. I'm a computer analyst and programmer during the week and I'm a volunteer construction leader with Habitat for Humanity St. Louis on many weekends. This evening, I am speaking as a private citizen with lots of experience building houses with good energy efficiency and not as a spokesperson for Habitat for Humanity St. Louis. I started working with energy efficiency and insulation about sixty years ago. I helped put storm windows on the house my family lived in north of Kansas City during the fall seasons between nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen sixty-one. I helped insulate the family, my, the house my family had just bought and lived in in Northwest Ohio during the fall of nineteen sixty-seven. I worked for an uncle in Tulsa, insulating new and existing houses and commercial buildings during the summer of nineteen seventy-five. I prepped for insulation the house that I had just bought and lived in in Webster Groves in the fall of nineteen eighty. I helped insulate the house my older brother was building in the Twin Cities area of Minnesota in the winter of nineteen eighty-seven. I have helped build well-insulated houses with Habitat for Humanity St. Louis since nineteen ninety. As a volunteer construction leader with Habitat for Humanity St. Louis, I help build and I lead other volunteers to build our Habitat houses. Habitat for Humanity St. Louis has always built well-built, well-insulated houses. Since the beginning of the two thousand eight build year, we have been building to the LEED Platinum standards for all of our new houses. LEED is for the, is, stands for the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. We have built about a hundred forty houses to the LEED Platinum standards. Habitat for Humanity St. Louis is the largest builder of LEED Platinum houses in the United States. The construction is all done with volunteers. Part of my job as a volunteer construction leader is to teach the other volunteers the skills that are needed to do the task that we are doing that day. I teach high school and college students and teachers and lawyers and nurses who build the Habitat houses. I teach them enough so that they can build the houses to the LEED Platinum standards. If the volunteers who help build Habitat houses can learn enough from me in the morning to build the houses to the LEED Platinum standards, it seems to me that the professional carpenters and plumbers and electricians and HVAC workers who build houses for a living should be able to learn to build their houses to the International Energy Conservation Code standards, which are not as high as the LEED Platinum standards. Energy efficiency benefits our community in many ways. It helps keep our air and water clean. It reduces our energy bills and it makes our homes safer and healthier. St. Louis County should adopt the twenty fifteen International Energy Conservation Code, Chapter eleven of the International Residential Code compromise that has come up. It includes duct testing and blower door tests, vital tools in making sure that our houses are built correctly and safely.
I need you to wrap up, Mr. Reinhardt. I'm sorry.
Okay. It's a good start. Next year, we should focus on the twenty twenty-one code without weakening amendments. Our community deserves it.
Thank you very much. Thank you much. That concludes public forum. Please proceed with the introduction of bills.
Bill number three seventy-four, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to five thousand dollars from the Missouri Department of Conservation, appropriating the same for support of purchasing equipment for prescribed burns at various county parks. Bill number three seventy-five, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, accepting grants totaling up to seventy thousand dollars from the State of Missouri Department of Social Services for the Skill Up Program, depositing and appropriating said monies as set forth herein and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number three seventy-six, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, accepting a grant of up to two hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars from the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development for support of the Department of Human Services Twenty Twenty Youth Jobs League Program, depositing and appropriating said monies as set forth herein, authorizing the county executive and the director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents. Bill number three seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, authorizing the administrator of the St. Louis County Municipal Court to implement the Show Me Courts Court Automation System and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number three seventy-eight, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Regional Justice Information Service for the provision of information technology staff support services to St. Louis County. Bill number three seventy-nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with St. Louis Community College to support a medical assistance cohort training program. Bill number three eighty, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with E-Hawk Inc. for smartphone application monitoring services for the Department of Justice Services. Bill number three eighty-one, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to a contract with Woodchip Soccer Club, DBA Real WC St. Louis, release of soccer facilities at Kennedy Park, which contract was authorized by ordinance number twenty-six thousand, twenty-eight. Bill number three eighty-two, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to grant three easements and a temporary construction easement within Albrecht County Park to the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District MSD for MSD's South County Sanitary Relief Project and to execute necessary documents. Bill number three eighty-three, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, appropriating up to thirty-two million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars of the funds received from the State of Missouri from the Prop A half-cent sales tax levied pursuant to ordinance number twenty-four thousand, two hundred forty-five for the Public Mass Transit Trust Fund for public transportation services from the amount received by the St. Louis Ca- excuse me, County from July first, two thousand nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, appropriating from the Transportation Trust Fund fifty percent of the amount received by St. Louis County from the sales tax levied by ordinance number six thousand, seven ninety-two. From July first, two thousand nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, net of the TIF transfers out, appropriating in the Public Mass Transit Fund one hundred percent of the amount received from July first, two thousand nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen from the quarter cent Prop M sales tax levied pursuant to ordinance number seventeen thousand, one hundred fifty-three, net of TIF transfers out, providing for the amounts and method of dispersments to ByState Development Agency and specifying certain conditions for providing such funding to ByState Development Agency and repealing ordinance number twenty-seven thousand, five hundred sixty-two. Bill number three eighty-four, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, distributing to ByState Development Agency fifty million, four hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars of funds received from the State of Missouri from the Prop A half-cent sales tax levied pursuant to ordinance number twenty-four thousand, two hundred forty-five for the Public Mass Transit Trust Fund for public transportation services, distributing to ByState Development Agency from the Transportation Trust Fund thirty-six percent of the amount received by St. Louis County from the sales tax levied by ordinance number six thousand, seven hundred ninety-two, from January first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty, net of the TIF transfers out, distributing to ByState Development Agency from the Public Mass Transit Fund, one hundred percent of the amount received from January first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty, from the quarter cent Prop M sales tax levied pursuant to ordinance number seventeen thousand, one hundred fifty-three, net of TIF transfers out, providing for the amounts and method of dispersments to ByState Development Agency and specifying certain conditions for providing such funding to ByState Development Agency. Bill number three eighty-five, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway and ordinance, amending Chapter twelve-ten, Title twelve, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, regulations for bicyclists by repealing and reenacting Section twelve-ten point zero five zero pertaining to riding bicycles on roadways and amending Chapter twelve-twelve, Title twelve, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended by adding and enacting a new section, twelve-twelve point two zero zero pertaining to vulnerable road users. Bill number three eighty-six, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the St. Louis County Police Association, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge one-eleven for police officers of the St. Louis County Police Department. Mr. Presiding Officer, those are the bills.
Thank you very much. Please proceed with the perfection of bills.
Bill number twenty, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Bill number twenty is adopted.
Substitute bill number one for bill number two eighty-four, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Walton Gray. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute bill number two for bill number two eighty-four, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Walton Gray and ordinance, amending Chapter five oh two, Title five, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, levy and collection of taxes by repealing and reenacting Sections five oh two point four six oh and five oh two point four seven oh and by adding and enacting a new Section five oh two point four seven two pertaining respectively to the Housing Resources Commission and establishment of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Um, so, we've had two hearings now and lots of dialogue about this bill and I believe that this substitute bill addresses many of the concerns raised by stakeholders while also preserving what is most important and that is establishing an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, with that, I move to perfect substitute bill number two for bill number two eighty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on the motion to adopt substitute bill number two for bill number two eighty-four, there are four ayes and three noes.
Very well, substitute bill number one, I'm sorry, number two for bill number two eighty-four is adopted.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I do. I move to perfect substitute bill number two for bill number two eighty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on the motion to perfect substitute bill number two for bill number two eighty-four, there are four ayes and two, three noes.
Very well, substitute bill number two for bill number two eighty-four is perfected.
Bill number three thirty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy for Councilmember Dunaway.
Let's hold bill number three thirty.
Bill number three thirty is adopted.
Bill number three thirty-one, introduced by Councilmember Trakis. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute bill number one for bill number three thirty-one, introduced by Councilmember Trakis. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute bill number one for bill number three thirty-one, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, approving and adopting the budget for, for the General Fund for Fiscal Year twenty twenty, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the General Fund, the sum of three hundred and sixteen million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars, to be placed to the credit of the respective departments, offices, boards, commissions, agencies and funds of the St. Louis County Government as provided in the budget for Fiscal Year twenty twenty as amended by this ordinance.
Move to perfect bill number three thirty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I thought there's a sub.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. There is. Uh, we have a substitute bill, so please read the bill.
I'm sorry?
Is there not a substitute bill here?
I just read the substitute bill.
Okay. I was lost in something else.
You need to move for adoption of substitute bill number one.
All right. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Substitute bill number one is adopted for bill number three thirty-one. Move to perfect substitute bill number one for bill number three thirty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Substitute bill number one for bill number thirty-one is perfected.
Bill number three forty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number three forty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Bill number three forty-eight is perfected.
Bill number three fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number three fifty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Bill number three fifty-three is perfected.
Bill number three sixty-three, introduced by Councilmember Harder. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute bill number one for bill number three sixty-three, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder and ordinance, amending Title eleven, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, Public Works and Building Regulations by repealing and reenacting Chapter eleven fifteen Building Code, Chapter eleven sixteen Residential Code and Chapter eleven seventeen Existing Building Code and by adding and enacting Chapter eleven eighteen Swimming Pool and Spa Code.
I move for adoption as substitute bill number one for bill number three sixty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Substitute bill one for bill numbers three sixty-three is adopted.
I move to perfect substitute bill number one for bill number three sixty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Substitute bill one for bill number three sixty-three is perfected.
Bill number three sixty-four, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number three sixty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Bill number three sixty-four is perfected.
Bill number three sixty-five, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number three sixty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Bill number three sixty-five is perfected.
Bill number three sixty-six, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number three sixty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Bill number three sixty-six is perfected.
Bill number three sixty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number three sixty-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Bill, uh, motion carries. Bill number three sixty-seven is perfected.
Bill number three sixty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Fitch. Bill number three sixty-eight introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I need to do some more work on this particular bill, so at this point I will drop three sixty-eight.
Very well, bill number three sixty-eight is dropped.
Bill number three sixty-nine introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect bill number three sixty-nine. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, bill number three sixty-nine is perfected.
Bill number three seventy introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect bill number three seventy. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, bill number three seventy is perfected.
Bill number three seventy-one introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect bill number three seventy-one. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, bill number three seventy-one is perfected.
Bill number three seventy-two introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect bill number three seventy-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, bill number three seventy-two is perfected.
Bill number three seventy-three introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect bill number three seventy-three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, bill number three seventy-three is perfected. At this point, I want to, uh, um, before we move on from perfection, I want to move to suspend the rules in order to advance bill number three seventy-eight to perfection order of business. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, bill number three seventy-eight is advanced to perfection order of business. That being the case, um, please, uh, I'd like to move to perfect bill number, uh, three seventy-eight. Second. So before we do so, um, please read bill number three seventy-eight.
Bill number three seventy-eight introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
All right, so, uh, move, the motion's been seconded, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, I think we've, um, perfected the bill. Do I need to do a roll call?
No.
Okay, so bill number three seventy-eight is perfected. Um, I'd also like to consider, uh, um, to suspend the rules, move to suspend the rules in order to advance bill number three eighty-three to the perfection order of business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, the motion carries, bill number three eighty-three is advanced to the perfection order of business. Please read bill number three eighty-three.
Bill number three eighty-three introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I'd like to move, uh, bill number three eighty-three for perfection. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none? I'm sorry, opposed? Hearing none, uh, bill number three eighty-three is perfected. Finally, I'd like to, uh, move to suspend the rules in order to advance bill number three eighty-four to perfection docket or perfection order of business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, uh, bill number three eighty-four is, um, on the perfection order of business. Please read bill number three eighty-four.
Bill number three eighty-four introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Uh, move to perfect bill number three eighty-four. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, bill number three eighty-four is perfected. Thank you for your patience on that. Let's move to final passage.
Bill number three fourteen introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number three fourteen.
Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three fourteen, there are seven ayes.
Very well, bill number three fourteen is finally passed.
Bill number three twenty introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, I move to hold bill number three twenty. I think we'd like to have a hearing. I know Councilman Trachis is interested in, um, doing a substitute and I'm open to having a, a conversation about that.
I appreciate, uh, Councilwoman's, um, patience with me on this and, uh, and Councilwoman, uh, Daye's interest in having a committee of the whole, so, uh, bill number three twenty will be held and we'll schedule a committee of the whole as soon as possible and practicable. And thank you both.
Bill number three twenty-four introduced by Councilmembers Harder and Fitch.
I move for final passage of bill number three twenty-four.
Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Um, I did request more information and, um, I'm not really clear as to changes from the previous bill that I voted against, so I'm gonna vote no.
I'm sorry?
No.
Can I hear that again? Thank you. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three twenty-four, there are five ayes and two noes.
Very well, look, bill number three twenty-four is finally passed.
Substitute bill number one for bill number three twenty-nine introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of substitute bill number one for bill number three twenty-nine. Second. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on substitute bill number one for bill three twenty-nine, there are seven ayes.
Very well, bill, substitute bill number one for bill number three twenty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-two introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three thirty-two. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three thirty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three thirty-two is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-three introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three thirty-three. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three thirty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three thirty-three is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-four introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three thirty-four. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three thirty-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three thirty-four is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-five introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three thirty-five. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three thirty-five, there are seven ayes.
Very well, on bill number three thirty-five is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-six introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three thirty-six. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three thirty-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three thirty-six is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-seven introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three thirty-seven. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three thirty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Very well, bill number three thirty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-eight introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three thirty-eight. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three thirty-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three thirty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-nine introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three thirty-nine. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three thirty-nine, there are seven ayes.
Very well, bill number three thirty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number three forty introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three forty. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three forty, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three forty is finally passed.
Bill number three forty-one introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three forty-one. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
On bill three forty-one, Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three forty-one, there are seven ayes.
Thank you, bill number three forty-one is finally passed.
Bill number three forty-two introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three forty-two. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three forty-two, there are seven ayes.
Very well, bill number three forty-two is finally passed.
Bill number three forty-three introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of bill number three forty-three. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three forty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three forty-three is finally passed.
Bill number three forty-four introduced by Councilmember Trakas.
Move for final passage of bill number three forty-four.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three forty-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three forty-four is finally passed.
Bill number three forty-five introduced by Councilmember Trakas.
Move for final passage of bill number three forty-five.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three forty-five, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three forty-five is finally passed.
Bill number three forty-six introduced by Councilmember Trakas.
Move for final passage of bill number three forty-six.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three forty-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three forty-six is finally passed.
Bill number three forty-seven introduced by Councilmember Trakas.
Move for final passage of bill number three forty-seven.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three forty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three forty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number three forty-nine introduced by Councilmember Trakas.
Move for final passage of bill number three forty-nine.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three forty-nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three forty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number three fifty introduced by Councilmember Trakas.
Move for final passage of bill number three fifty.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three fifty, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three fifty is finally passed.
Bill number three fifty-one introduced by Councilmember Trakas.
Move for final passage of bill number three fifty-one.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mister Presiding Officer, on bill three fifty-one, there are seven ayes.
Very well, bill number three fifty-one is finally passed.
Bill number three fifty-two introduced by Councilmember Trakas.
Move for final passage of bill number three fifty-two.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.